Field chair ramps. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Counselor meeting, your order October 12, 2023. Please join the platitude. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Anyone receive a copy of their minutes? Are any questions, changes, amendments to do with the minutes? If not, any motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Thank you, Sarah, go second. I'll say. We'll give this one to Isaac.
Yeah.
Go around the room, right?
Yes.
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 Thank you. You also receive the copy of the treasures report. And like we discussed last month, the savings has dropped because we haven't received our monies from the ARPA, police fund, I guess is a good way to say it. Once you receive that, that money will be put back in and it'll go back up by a hundred thousand dollars. And we did get some information on how to start that process. In a email earlier this week, so it's sooner than later. Okay. Awesome, awesome. Any questions for Melinda as far as the treasure report? And I did, do you know, last month, we talked about the bills a little bit and, oh, we'll talk about them in a second. Okay, bills for payment. On the bills for payment, last month, we talked about how the trash bill was, had been higher than we expected and the tipping fees were had been higher. AC and the front staff did check into it. They found roughly thirty some odd people that had more cans than twenty of them that we might have been overbilled for from the company. So that's been fixed. So this month is about four hundred dollars under what we expect. So it seems like we've got that under control and the front staff knows to look at this certain number and it'll trigger a question. But we did have people with three cans and they, no one knew they had cans, several of them. So, yeah, it's cost, the cost of town, a hundred dollars instead of thirteen dollars for that person. Any questions on the other line items? I know I had a question about the pay billing, which was a little higher than normal, but that was just a, a every couple of year billing for a test that we have to do, so that's why that was up a little bit more. Anyone else have any questions? Motion to approve then, please.
All motion to approve.
Okay. That's second.
Second.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Swing and a share.
I was two.
Go around the room.
Yes.
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 Okay. Public works. Oh, no, police department, sorry. Please, don't skip you. I just spent twenty minutes talking, you want me to talk? Hold on, you're coming out there, let me look at my left real quick. I don't remember what I had, everything was in the email. I guess the only other thing I would say was had the opportunity to teach a class of your response to active shooter events. For HFD had a fire administrator conference in there. It was administrative staff from some fire departments across the state. They were looking for somebody to teach that kind of class. I'm fortunate enough to be certified in that, so I taught that for them. So we got to reach out, Timber Hill got to reach out and help some fire departments across states, that's pretty cool. And got to go to the BML conference with Austin and Mayor, a couple of council members. That was very beneficial, I appreciated having the opportunity to do that. And I really helped county get some energy going for me and I think everybody else had a chance to go, so I appreciate it there. Talk about the thing with the towns that you work on right now that you mentioned down there. Talk about it with the MOU? Yes. So. So everyone, everyone's worried about, I think that's. So there's two things that our town attorney has been gracious enough to bring up, but it's an opportunity to form a foundation, a police foundation, it'd be a nonprofit organization here, Easternburg has one, County Fire is working on doing one. And the idea behind it is to create a nonprofit organization outside of the police department that would support the police department and its employees. An example would be, say, an employee had an injury or something, Harrisburg also had a stroke, for example, it's probably going to end up having to leave the job. The foundation has done things to help raise money to support him and his family. Things that could be catastrophic, like a house fire or something like that, so they could help an officer or an officer's family with that kind of thing. They could also do, when we did the K-9 program, we went out and asked for money from the community and that was dealt with in-house, it would be a way for a nonprofit to do that on our behalf, outside of the government and some things like that. That would just be good practice for us and would help in the future. But we brought up in the meeting, I guess, last month, councilman Justice suggested that maybe we could collaborate with the other police departments in the county. And I asked Quentin about that, he said that he'd be willing to help with that. Coincidentally, I believe he works with another town anyway. So if we can put all six of the towns working together, we may have more people involved, maybe be able to raise more money, do more good for more people. And we'll be careful when we set that up to do the best we can about, somebody donates or sponsors and wants to help out, dating PD that the money goes there, if they want to give to the foundation as a whole, that it would do that. So there's a lot of different things to talk about, what we can do, can we do it, how to do it, that kind of thing. So this is in the genesis stage at this point, but I think it's something that can help with programs, like certain wellness programs for officers, starting a program for one of the agencies that came in for a grant for helping out an officer or a family in Sydney. The other one is, we would like to do a memorandum of understanding between the town police department. If you've been on the council very long, I'm sure you've heard me talk about the town training group, police training group, where five out of six, and Elkton is going to start training with us, I believe. We do fire room training, defensive tactics, which is hand on things, driving, other high risk things, including active shooter training with Harrisburg. We would like to have that documented in some form in writing. Right now, it's an informal cooperative. We would like to formalize it so that if someone asks, you know, how do you all do training? We can point to a document that says this outlines the understanding that we have. There may be also other opportunities to cover things like peer-to-peer support groups or things like that that could be included as we go along. I think it's one of those things, it's kind of like a maturation kind of thing. We've been really good about collaborating, but kind of codifying it so we can explain it to an outside person, a community member or in a civil war, I think will be beneficial. That's a great idea. Thanks, Paul.
Absolutely. And I told him I would do that, probably happy to help with that. I think it's a great initiative.
Thank you. Anything else, chief? You've been talking for forty-five minutes. Yes. Okay, AC, we're going to you, buddy.
I've got a list of five things and three of them look like I should defer to Quentin. The first, first thing is the Sparmine water line project. I was in contact with our engineer, Park Schaefer, today, and he thinks that we should be able to get the documents for the Sparmine water line project out for bidding next week and put a date on those, to get those back before next council meeting, so that hopefully we can. And we always have numbers for next council meeting, it sounds like, hopefully, if we can get people to do it. He said that he's already talked to some of the local contractors, so they are aware of the project coming up. So we'll just hopefully get those out, get that out of bid next week. The American Legion Park bathrooms, we received two proposals for that project. They're much more valuable than the first round of proposals. And Chris and I will be reviewing those and then we'll discuss with the appropriate committee or committees, however we decide to do that, whether Public Works or Parks and Rec or kind of. And the next thing I have, so I have the BZA separation process, disposition of the church and Main Street property and the free water line. So Quentin, you pitch what chapter order you want to go in on those.
Yes, sir. The board is zoning appeals, so we've always had a joint board about zoning appeals, BZA with Broadway. Because Broadway is over the statutory threshold in terms of residence, they have to set up their own, so that means Timber Hill will need to set up our own. There's nothing really in the code about how you disband a BZA, which is interesting, so I'm going to have to work with Broadway's council to figure that out. And then we'll need to put together documents to establish our own, the way we've done it before. It's pretty straightforward from a statutory point of view and based on our own zoning ordinances, so with your all's approval, I'm going to move forward with that or with Broadway's council, see what we need to do to formally close the joint BZA and then they'll start their own, they'll start our own. We'd like to have five people, but given our track record, I think three is probably the way to start. I think we could probably put language in there to say that it has to be thirty-seven, you know, and then we can have as few as three, as many as seven, which is what we could, allows us to do it anyway.
Any questions about the BZA? It's pretty standard. And we already have two members right now, correct? We do. We have two members right now. Yep. So talking about the property in the corner of church and Main Street, this is the sacred building, so we raised the property, right, so that we could conform with safety. We recorded a lien for those costs. What I'm requesting we do now is that we move forward giving notice to the property owner and doing a publication, so then I can file a petition to sell the property to pay us for those costs, because she hasn't done anything, she hasn't made any plans. Part of the notice that I'm going to send out includes that if she wants to enter into a payment plan or make some sort of payment arrangement, she can contact Melinda directly to do that, but right now, we just need to move on it. Sitting there collecting interest is not helpful to the town, in my opinion. So I don't, I see a lot of nodding heads, so I'm going to take that as consent for me to move forward with that, we lie. Good.
Yeah, we did, we got on this pretty quick, because the lien was filed in September of last year, I believe.
Correct.
And so you had to wait a year before we could actually move all this process, so.
Yep. Does this end up being like sold at the courthouse, that kind of thing?
It's what's considered a judicial sale. So a nonjudicial sale is like when you foreclose on a house because somebody has a mortgage, so you can, quote unquote, trustee. A judicial sale means we have to petition the court for the right to sell the house for the taxes. It's very similar to what the county does on tax sales, right? And we participate in that usually. It'll be the same process, it'll just be on us. We'll need to do a title update, see if there's any taxes that are owed and all that kind of thing, but that's, that's the process for that. The last thing relates to the water line easements or free water line, or however it is you want to call it. So I started digging into this as I have a client that I'm affiliated with that owns some property, who is the, Garber Street Road?
No, it's on Raiders Street.
Raiders Street, right. So I started digging into it a little bit because he was asking me some questions and then I found this file in my office, which is one of three related to the free water line deeds, which has been around for a while. This goes back to the early nineteen hundreds. So for those of us that were lucky enough to participate in the field trip a little while ago, remember we went out to where the spring was and it was the weather. So the town bought the water rights of several people that were downstream from the spring in order to be able to have a holding tank and provide more water to the town. In exchange, it was all agriculture rural area, they said, we, when we connect the water lines, we will give you free water to feed your cow or poultry or whatever it was. A lot of those properties have since been developed in some way. There have been individuals that have been receiving free water for a long time. Basically, looking at the memos that were drafted in the late nineteen nineties and early two thousands, I don't know if any of those people are entitled to free water anymore. A lot of those deeds said that they were entitled to free water as long as the Timber Hill Water Corporation existed, which has not existed for a long time. I think it's one of these things where it was set up in the nineteen hundreds through the sixty, seventies and eighties, it was just honored for a long time. And it's one of these residual things that it's just, once you start giving away something for free, it's difficult to take it back. But I think we need to look into our recourse on some of these properties. There's three categories of properties. Some of the deeds have specific language, like to their heirs and successors, so there may be some people that are entitled to some water rights for free, provided that they're continuing to use it in the same way. So as long as it's still being used for agricultural purposes, then they may, they may be entitled to water. The people that have developed properties since then to build houses and things like that, especially the people that didn't have language and the deed saying here, it did not include language for heirs and successors, they should not be getting that water. So it's going to be a process in my mind of, A, legally, what can we do? B, who's entitled to what? And then C, what are we going to do about it? This is not going to be quick, nor will it be easy, really, but it's going to take basically digging into these files to figure out what was done before, because what I looked at, me and AC looked at the memos multiple times, Mark said, hey, I wanted to dig into this issue, and the town said, no, not right now, we're okay doing what we're doing. And so they were never given authority to kind of dive into it fully. So we have a lot of back records, but I'm going to have to update the title on a lot of these parcels to see what they actually own, what their deed said, what the source deed said. So if you want me to dive into that project, I will. I'm not really looking forward to it, but it's something that probably needs to be done.
Just, just, not as good of an information, the front office pulled up a list for me today of the number of free water connections that we have, and it's, on that list, it shows we have twenty-one. So at the current out-of-count rates, you're looking at seven hundred and forty dollars per billing or forty-four hundred dollars per year in revenue that we're losing off of the free water connections. So even if, I mean, even if we can't get all of them, get that of them, it's still two thousand, twenty-two hundred dollars more a year at the current rates than would be revenue for us, so.
Do you need an official motion?
Well, here's my thing, I didn't want to take on a bunch of legal work and start building the town for something that you all don't want done. It's something that I can do, but it's definitely, you know, it's probably going to be, probably ten thousand dollars of legal work, to do all the title work and to put together what our scheme is going to be. Plus, there's potential liability, because if we tell people that they're not entitled to water and they think they are, right, there's potential lawsuits there. So, but if it's forty-five hundred dollars a year, I mean, it only takes a couple of years until you recoup the cost and then you're set, you know, for the future. But that's my analysis, I mean, I don't, and that's my best guess, it may be less, you know, I may find everything that I need quickly, I just, I'm just being candid about what I think the cost is going to be. And it's not one of those projects, anytime I'm doing anything of that size, I want council to know what I'm talking about here before I do it.
I.
You've been around for a while.
Thanks. I really needed that, same thing. I was, I was on that road and if somebody that has a hydrant, they let it run continuously. And they was watering their garden. And that was kind of a sore subject to me, because then we can't water our things in town that needs water, but they can. So yes, I'm going to kind of go over.
Okay.
If you see something like that, let us know, because we can address that.
Okay.
Carl, you seem to like you want to say something.
I'm just thinking. It's going to be some of these residents that are going to have the inherited rights to the water.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, do you have an idea how many that's going to be versus the twenty-one, or give it to you?
Well, the twenty, I mean, twenty-one includes all of them, right?
That's all, that's, that's what we had the list of.
Everyone who's not paying for water. When you talk about inherited, what I'm saying is in the deed usually. When we granted the right to use the water and nowhere, the interesting thing from the memos that we looked at, it doesn't say free anywhere, it's the right to access the water, to use the water. It's not like you get it for free for some water.
But as long as the water board exists?
As long as the, yeah, Timber Hill Water Corporation exists, which doesn't exist in the water.
Does that make the?
That's my, that's my argument. And so who would have been effective in saying, hey, now you have to start paying? And to your point about people that have inherited, then, if the language in the deed said, hey, Carl, you're giving the town, right, the water rights, and we're giving you the right to use free water, but anyone after you is going to have to pay for it, versus you and all of your heirs get access to the water as long as you continue to use it the same way. My point is of those twenty-one, I think there's probably at least fifteen that did not have your future generations, it was just you. But the future generations have continued to use it because it's not something that's been monitored, because we don't know when the property changes hands, other than when the billing came in. And after it changes hands so many times and you don't take action, so it's going to have to be something where, my plan would be to come back to you all with a report and say, these are the twenty-one properties. Group A is this, group B is this, group C is this. For C, it's clear to me, we have all the legal authority in the world, I want to turn, tell them to start paying. B, it's pretty clear to me, but there's a little bit of liability, I want to do this. A, I'm not too sure about. And so maybe you do C first and see what the fallout is, and then a couple of months later, you do B, or you do them all at the same time. But I just don't think there's a lot of authority for those people to get the free water anymore.
Is there any point in the near future that we won't be using the water, our spring and have water come this way?
I can't imagine that we won't because the, because our mechanic is back there. So that would get, that would be another question, another legal question, you know, if, if we're not, is it because we're not using the source back there or is it because our water's stored back there? I've heard different things over the years and, you know, over the years, stories spread and like the, the versions of them changed, but I've always heard that the, the water was granted to the property owners because of the creek that ran out through, where they drew their water from. The volume that, the flow in that creek lessened because the town or the Timber Hill Water Corporation was collecting that water in the reservoir, and so there's people that have as much water, that's why that water line was running down through there.
Yeah.
Who, who knows if that's an accurate?
It's called, it's, you know, we, you've heard about it before, like mineral rights or timber rights, these are called reperium rights, which is the water rights for downstream users. And so you can purchase people's reperium rights, which is exactly what they did, they purchased their downstream use of water, saying, we're going to collect more at this source upstream and we'll compensate you. And instead of paying the money for it, they said, well, we're going to divert the water through a pipe and then we'll give you access to the pipe because you're not going to get it from the stream. But it's just a matter of when that cuts off.
And I, I've had the same question, I think Carl's getting at is, you know, say one day the spring doesn't produce and we're pumping water that way.
Mm-hmm.
Do they really have rights to the water coming from town? Or do they have rights for the water coming from the spring?
Is it only related to the spring?
And I, and I don't think those deeds contemplated that. Cause this spring didn't exist.
It only came one way.
And they were, did they exist when, so fair amount of time, it's pumping that way, right, Chris?
A half percent.
Nine, nine percent of the time, they're getting water that wasn't deeded in, they're getting, they're not getting spring water that they were deeded to, they're getting water that was not in existence.
And I think the way they tried to capture that was as long as the Timber Hill Water Corporation exists, which doesn't anymore. Which doesn't anymore, but when they, when the town purchased that corporation, they didn't address the water line deeds. And this is something that has been going on for many councils and many mayors and many managers.
Yes.
So, so. I mean, you all that have been on council or have been around for a while, have you all recalled discussing this?
I, I, I went through it twice.
Twice, okay.
I think at least, at least twice. I think twice.
Yeah, the memos are dated, type like a multiple member.
Oh, yeah, I've got a different. But I remember if it was, I don't think it's since I've been mayor, because you don't remember.
I don't remember having serious, we, I mean, the free water line comes up, came up enough in discussion throughout the years, but I don't remember, I never was involved in a serious discussion of addressing and trying to get it.
So it would have been around two thousand, maybe, two thousand and one, two, something like that. But yeah, we had, Mark spent a lot of time researching, looking at these and.
Well, he spent a lot of time looking at the source deeds for the water line, so I have copies of all those. The issue is the people that own it now updated that title to see what do they actually have and how do they take title?
And, and did people who, the family owned the property, they split off to their son and daughter?
Mm-hmm.
Did they get pre-written letter?
Well, the way you all handle it in the front office is, once there's a subdivision, they have to start paying.
Supposed to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you had a fifty acre parcel.
But did it all of the four, though? Did that happen?
Yeah.
Was there splitting going on and mud or something up in prior to these guys, that they just plugged in a meter, you know? Who knows? Not, I think it's what, like, does anyone have an issue with looking at it? Do you want to motion to?
I think it's another one of these things, it's more like, if everybody's not in their head, then I'll do the work. I don't really need you all to vote on it. I just want to make sure that you know what we're doing, this, you know, I'm pretty candid about. I don't do anything unless everybody says yes.
Good.
Well, even if it were close to ten thousand dollars in five years, it's paying back.
Even if it's half and you don't pay. Yeah, yeah. You'll, you'll get your payback, yeah. And it'll prevent people from having the greenest garden in the world because they can't. That's more than one. What else you got to say? Is that it?
Yeah.
Is that what you got, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to be asking you about the Timber Hill water co-op when you get up there, so you got to have your dates.
We're going to do what?
I'm going to test you on the Timber Hill water co-op, go off when you get up there.
I've been thinking about it.
Okay. This, this isn't industry, anything new, AC?
No, nothing new, nothing new.
Okay. Parks and Rec? I guess once we get the bathroom bids reviewed by you and Chris, Parks and Rec, I assume we go in Parks and Rec, Public Works, we'll open up the book, whoever wants to show up on this.
And depending on what the overlay does of those committees, it might be easy to have the whole council sit down on it.
Just, well, once you get through it, just pick a day and whoever we show up, you can just go over it.
And if we do the full council, we could also, at that point, you know, it would be a advertised meeting that we're discussing everything. The award of the contract, it ought actually be made that, I would have to wait for the next, hit monthly fees to, just, it had to just delay it for, so we may just do a whole council.
Okay. Finance? We still have to do a budget amendment at some point, but that's on your back burner somewhere.
Tell them to make a note so that we could try to review that next month. And the authors have been here.
They're finishing up.
Should pay some flying colors?
I don't know yet. I know, probably soon.
Okay. Cool. I'm sure you did.
I am sure.
They were here last time and they worked some of the other.
And new system's got to help.
It does.
It's got to help, yeah. Personnel?
We've been, like always, doing a great job, I mean, massive output, you know, getting stuff done, so.
Quite an ask, did we get the stage done for Parks and Rec? Is it finally done?
Our, our part's done.
Okay. Still waiting on the other part.
Couple of cases, but hopefully, hopefully.
Awesome. Queens District Memorial Museum.
You want to go first?
I'll go.
He's, he's still thinking about dates.
Okay. In the month of September, we had two hundred and twenty-one guests, fifty-five volunteers, a hundred and seventy volunteer hours, Heritage Days was a great success. And on Sunday, excuse me, October twenty-eighth, our.
And on Sunday, excuse me, October twenty-eighth, our program is going to be on first responders. And we're having speakers from Brooklyn, Timberville, and birthday.
And I really enjoyed the speaker and all that down there, so thanks for the invite.
You'll do it again next year. Thank you for doing it.
You're welcome. Um, okay. You gotta tell us about the Timberville Water Co-op, when it started, when it, then you won't have to do any research.
That's right, that's right.
When it, when it, the Timberville Water Co-op starts and then it, what?
Carter, nineteen eighty? And I think it was, uh, bought out by the town then, uh, yeah, I think it was nineteen sixteen.
I thought you were gonna tell me nineteen sixteen, it was a May, it was a sunny day.
Now, don't, don't hold it back, you kind of took it by surprise here.
So, it was only, it was only in existence for like eight, ten years?
Yeah, it wasn't very long. And I remember I used to talk to Mayor McCollum, he'd be sitting down here in the museum, and you, he got free water. And he was held, he paid for this from the very beginning.
Well, I, I.
Because I think what the, what the, the water, the source was down there somewhere around, uh, Main Avenue, I think.
I don't know, not this one, no.
Does that sound like it now?
When we talked about, oh, the small well.
Oh, the small well, so they got some small well.
That's, there would have been, I think the small well was probably the first, yeah, that was the first source, right, Chris? Wasn't that the original, that was the original source for the town? I think.
Maybe, maybe it's even a different well, whether the.
Yes, I think looking at the old map, yeah, I think it was in that same spot.
Okay, okay.
But, yeah, Mayor McCollum, and then there's a couple, uh, uh, houses out, Main Avenue, and District McCollum's house up there, or even that, that was, that had three water all these years. And he paid for his, I mean, we used to talk about that. But I'm pretty sure, like, you know, it's when the, that Timberville Water Corporation started.
It started.
I think it was from the next decade.
It was like the Spitzer.
Well, he's something.
Owns a house across the river, the original gentleman, that, that family.
Was it a little group, a group of the men?
The Ziegler's? Ziegler brought to the Ziegler's, I thought they had, they had.
I don't know if Art Ziegler had anything to do with that.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
So, that had been before Art Ziegler, because he was born in eighteen ninety-eight. So, we're talking about nineteen eighty, it's only been ten years old.
He's, he's, for you.
Of course, Mike didn't talk to him, so, so.
Okay, I'm hyped you actually then, go ahead.
I'm gonna hold it, start digging through my papers. I think nineteen eight, nineteen sixteen, I think. Remember, we talked about, uh, the town that had, had a contract with the Southern Railway too, providing so many gallons of water per day, or certain thing. And, uh, I guess that would have been the Water Corporation that was really early in nineteen hundred and so.
And so. You can research for next council.
I'll have to do that. Too much to remember. Anyway, I was sat down the other day and started reading the diaries for a little bit, and, uh, I just dropped it down, something that had quite a bit to do with my family, which I hope that doesn't matter, but. But, on Tuesday, August fifth, nineteen oh-two, there was a circus in Timberville. And some deeds are new, some deeds we've never used before. Friday, August eighth, nineteen oh-two, I played out nine bubble beens nest and five blossom nests in one field. And this is my dad. And Saturday, August ninth, nineteen oh-two, Timberville Brass Band was having a lawn party in Timberville tonight. September twenty-third, nineteen oh-two, my great-grandfather bought my father a pair of pants at the DS Walter Store in Timberville, and the cost was a dollar fifty. Now, if you think, that would have been the old wooden building and not the brick building. Because the brick building wasn't built until nineteen oh-nine, and this was in nineteen oh-two. You know, kind of think about things like that, it's kind of, kind of interesting. And then, all along this date, September twenty-third, nineteen oh-two, the appointments for the rural mail carriers in Timberville were appointed. My grandfather John Coke had route number thirty-five. My grandfather Will Garver had route number thirty-six. And my great uncle George Chris had route number thirty-seven. So, I should get three mails, shouldn't I? The actual deliverer of the mail didn't serve, so October fifteenth, nineteen oh-two, that was their official date. Because he has some notation before, they went out about a month ahead and dime in and practiced their routes and stuff. Every now and then, somebody from the post office department of the federal government would come and ride with them, every now and then. October twenty-third, nineteen oh-two, Doctor Welty B. Forney filled, uh, filled fourteen from a pocket, three gold films and one silver, cost two dollars and fifty cents. What would it be today, eight or nine hundred dollars?
Twenty, oh, total more than that.
Two or three.
February second, nineteen oh-two, six boys from Timberville went to Charle, Charleford State. And that's on the hill right up to my house on Rayers Church. I was, it was in nineteen fifty, I used to be down that tiny bubble down there. And I checked, we checked the old map before, and that was Charleford Farm, so I know that's the TV he's talking about. February eighteenth, nineteen oh-three, fourteen degrees below zero this morning. The summer of nineteen fifty-six. Found some, uh, some notations about when I was going to this cemetery. Eighty-three hours of Boeing Cemetery, six to one dollars and a quarter. And then another one to twenty-eight hours of Boeing Cemetery, twenty-one dollars. We were getting to seventy-five cents an hour, so it was, I still remember that. Nineteen fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and they only used a record cost six dollars a year. April twenty-first, nineteen twelve, was just not, this not good for you. We're in the Sunnysville Place at a reform church. And my dad went to the Dr. Church, but he had in there, he was teaching Sunnysville Place at a reform church that day. Well, they had a shortage of, of teachers, a what? Anyway, it was eight in his place. And that was special for you. That's church, there you go. And Friday, January eighth, nineteen fifteen, this is a debate I don't think we've ever had. A debate was held at the school auditorium. Martin Luther was a greater man than John Calvin, the affirmative side won. So, John, uh, so, Martin Luther was greater than John Calvin, is the way the judge decided.
Okay.
And then I found something about the old photon, Daniel Lyon, in his life started the old photon in eighteen ninety-two. And I'm sure it was through the Dr. Church, because the Dr. Church ran that, that, that in the Oracle's home boat. And Daniel Lyon, this is, uh, he was the second coast of mine was three, I was removed. And that's all I have.
That can cause him three times removed. That makes it like your sixth cousin. Okay. It causes everybody, yeah. Um, any other business?
Yes, I have something.
Yes, ma'am.
I cut this out of the paper, um, about cable in Timberville, that we have to sign a contract.
We have a franchise agreement.
With Comcast?
With Comcast and with Glow Fiber now.
Oh, we have it with Glow Fiber now? Okay.
That's, that's, that's what allowed them to come into town and start going on the work and everything.
That's all I wanted to say then, okay.
Was that cable too, or only?
It was.
Only?
Because of fiber.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, this said that Bridgewater and Elton, um.
Yes.
Is already doing it.
Yes, Glow Fiber had franchise agreements in Bridgewater and Elton for fiber. They are now going back and requesting the same franchise agreement for cable services. So, they can lay cable next to the fiber provided alongside Comcast. So, it's already been approved at Bridgewater, it's going through the process in Elton now. They've not approved the franchise agreement yet. I expect at some point they'll come to Timberville and ask for the franchise for the cable, just like that in other towns.
I guess my question is, what's the difference in fiber and cable?
This service, the fibers for the internet, and the cables for television.
Oh, cables, TV, okay, gotcha, gotcha. So, when they come in, we can, you can, you're gonna be able to switch from Comcast to whatever for your internet.
For your television. You can already, you can already choose for your internet.
Well, once, once he put it in.
Once it put in.
Once he put it in, I can choose. And then, if they come back for us, I can run the tables and put it, okay, gotcha.
I mean, we went with Glow Fiber, and it was amazing how much faster the internet is.
And it's just a matter of whether they want to do the cable service as well, or is there, do enough? People just use the fiber for streaming, it's not like cables. But I imagine that if they're doing it in other towns, eventually they'll work their way here.
Okay.
I have just, I have heard in front of the adult, the cable.
Okay.
I'm working with them on the one road, and I'll ask Stuart what they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other business, counsel?
One thing I wanted to say, maybe put a bug in everybody's ear, because I haven't done a lot of research to see what we could do, maybe JR can talk to me and fill me in. Um, I had the opportunity to do a ride-along with one of our officers, you know, see what's going on in the town, what their job entails. And during that ride-along, I got the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, you know. What, what do you do? What do you like about your job? What do you not like about your job? It was a really good time, glad I got the opportunity to do it. Uh, something that I think from multiple officers that I've talked to, I've heard two things, kind of across the board. Uh, first was, JR's a phenomenal chief, which I'm glad to hear. Um, second was, you know, everybody would like to maybe work towards getting some more time off available, which for that to happen is going to need another officer, from my understanding. Um, you know, they obviously have time off available, but I think if we had another officer, from my understanding, it would all, open up a swing shift where somebody could work more, and somebody could work nights, somebody could maybe work middle of the day. You know, we, we do have part-time people that I think it's such a headache to, you know, get it arranged last month for part-time to come in, that people feel bad to ask for time off. Maybe, you know, if it's something we could just look into about doing away with part-time and hiring, and like I said, you know, maybe me and JR can chat also, but look into getting rid of part-time and hire another full-time that way. They could kind of in-house just take care of, you know, hey, if you went off to see me, and I'll work tomorrow even, whatever, and trade shifts around. Other than that, just, you know, wanted to make sure, and I've talked to Chris, hopefully I'll get the chance to go to the maintenance department, maybe spend some time down there too. Just trying to make sure everybody, you know, I want to learn and make sure everybody's happy. We've got a good foundation, you know, if we're gonna grow the town, we need a good foundation to grow off of. And I think, uh, you know, starting in the people that work for the town, you know, being foundation office ladies as well. You know, making sure, uh, making sure we've just got a good foundation so we can keep building on it.
Okay.
Um, maybe just something to keep, keep in mind, look into for next, next month's meeting. Something to talk about.
Something to ponder, it's, it really comes down to if you can pay for it. That's really, that's really, that's what it all comes down to, unfortunately. It's, uh, it's what you can afford, what you can't afford, and we'll just have to talk about it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, yeah, appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, public comment. You two want to public comment on anything?